We'll start with the roll call.
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Brecht, temporary Popevsky.
Here.
And Mayor Rixby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. May we have a closed session report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the city council agenda, the council met and conferred as to a potential litigation matter, which is identified on the agenda as item C.A. The council received a report, gave direction, there's no action to report at this time. Item B on the council agenda was a labor negotiation, and that was not conducted yet. We'll complete that following the open session. On the housing authority agenda, there were two items under item E. A was a real property matter, as was B. Both those matters, the council received a report, gave direction to staff. There's no final action to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next is our invocation and pledge of allegiance, Councilman Daley. Please stand.
Please join me in bowing to death. Father God, we come to you and want to thank you for the many ways in which you bless us. Thank you for the privileges that we have to live in this country and this fine city. We ask now that you be with us as we discuss issues before our city, that you guide our discussions and our decisions. We ask these things of you. Please join me in saying our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance, flag flying, from the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, all nations, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Are there any items to be added or deleted? No, sir. Okay, the next item is oral reports from the public. Do you have any comments on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Scheduled items, we have presentation of proclamations. I understand there's someone here from the Children's Hospital, Michelle Parker, to receive this proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. The proclamation reads in part, "Whereas all children have the right to receive the care, protection, and guidance that family provides, to be free from harm and to have their physical, emotional, and educational needs met, the state and federal governments have proclaimed April 2013 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, for the purpose of promoting community involvement in the prevention of child abuse." And it goes on to list a lot of the other things that happened in the county and in support of this proclamation. Now therefore, the city, on behalf, that I, on behalf of the entire city, do proclaim April 2013 Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we thank you for accepting this.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to accept Childhood Cancer Awareness Week proclamation? Okay, then I'll just briefly mention what it's about. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids, Cancer Connection, report that cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children in the United States, and that this tragic disease is detected in 46 children each day and nearly 15,000 of our nation's young people each and every year. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and a sister organization, Kids Cancer Connection, founded 20 years ago, a member of the philanthropic Factor family are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Loma Linda Children's Hospital. And whereas, through its unique, sensitive, and comforting Magical Caps for Kids program, the American Cancer Fund distributes thousands of beautifully handmade caps. And whereas, the fund also sponsors nationwide courageous kid recognition awards. Therefore, I, on behalf of the city council, do declare the week of April 28 to May for Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. And we'll find who this goes to. Is there anyone to accept National Donate Life Month proclamation? Okay, seeing no one, then I will briefly report it out. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those who need the organs. Whereas more than 116,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 20,000 in California, are currently in the waiting list for organs. And whereas the needed donated organs are especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities. And whereas a single individual's donation of heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. And whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition, with nearly 10 million Californians having signed up with the registry. And whereas California residents can sign up by renewing their driver's license or ID cards with the DMV, therefore be it resolved that we declare April 2013 DMV Donate Life California Month. And we'll find who this goes to as well. So that's an official proclamation of the city. Now we'll move to item two, Joint Meeting of the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority regarding the audit report for the fiscal year ending last June 30. Markham.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come tonight and present, based on the financial statement and single audit for the year ended June 30, 2012. So my name is Sheri Lehman, and I am a CPA and a partner with the firm Markham LLP. We are the independent auditors for the City of Loma Linda. So what I will be discussing tonight is responsibilities, and that is the responsibilities of the city management, as well as Markham LLP, our overall opinion on the financial statements in the single audit, the reports that we issued for fiscal 2012, and some other key points, and then I'll take questions if there are any. So, as you know, and as I stated, we are the independent auditors, meaning we are independent from the city. Our job is to come in and to audit the financial statements of the city, as well as audit your compliance with federal grants, how you spend the money. So the city's responsibility is to present the financial statement position and the results of operations, fairly and in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. And that is the large document that will be put out on your website. It's put out each year. This is what we call the CAFR. It's the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And this is basically the financial information that we audit. So this has everything related to the city from a finance perspective for fiscal 2012, which is a year ended 6/30/2012. The city is also responsible to adopt sound accounting policies, provide reasonable accounting estimates, and establish and maintain internal controls, and to prevent and to detect fraud. So we look at this when we come out and do our audit. So our responsibility as the independent auditors is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. What we mean by reasonable is we cannot look at every transaction that occurs at the city. Obviously, that means we'd have to be out here every day. So what we do is we use a statistical sampling method. So we basically make selections if it's that type of an account. And we would make the selections based on the population as a whole, and so our findings would be representative of the population as a whole. If it's an account like cash, or debt, or something like that, obviously, we would audit the entire balance. And then the next point says we examine on a test basis evidence supporting amounts and disclosures, and that's what I mentioned. Obviously, we cannot look at everything that occurs in the city, so there's certain parameters and tests that we use to make sure that we have enough coverage and that it is representative of the transactions going on in the city. We do assess how you're accounting for things. We look at estimates, to the extent you have any significant estimates. Typically, cities and counties don't have real complex estimates, but, you know, to the extent you do have estimates, we obviously look at that. And we look at the overall financial statement presentation. We do also look at your internal controls, your policies and procedures. When it relates to the financial statement audit, we don't specifically perform testing per se, but we do enough work to understand if you've got significant deficiencies or issues, which I'm happy to report there are no significant issues. And then we ultimately express an opinion on the financial statements. And the wording can be a little convoluted that I have to use, that I'm required to use in my audit report, but at the end of the day, the city has a clean report, is what we call it, an unqualified opinion, meaning there's no qualifications. We didn't find anything material that we needed to report on. And this, basically, the slide goes over our opinion on the financial statements. Basically, it states that they're fairly presented in all material respects. Again, material, meaning I can't look at every transaction that goes on, but we look at enough to make sure that there's nothing material that's missing or misstated. We look at the significant accounting policies to make sure that they've been consistently applied. We make sure that your estimates that are in the financial statements are reasonable, because again, those are estimates. And that we look at the disclosures. And disclosures are the notes, basically, that tell the story to the financial statements. And just to reiterate what we do, the type of work that we do when we come out. So again, the city has financial statements. It's an entity, and we look at those numbers and we audit those numbers. And again, that's this, you know, big document that will be out on your website for everybody to see, because it is a public document. And then we also report on the single audit. And basically, what that is, that's an entirely separate audit that we conduct, and that is because the city receives federal grants. And because you do, and because of the dollar amount that you receive, you're required to also have a separate compliance audit on that. And we do that audit as well. And basically, that audit, the purpose of that audit is because federal monies, at the end of the day, are taxpayer dollars. And so the federal agencies want to make sure that the cities, counties, whoever's receiving these monies are deploying those monies the way that they are supposed to per the grant documents. And for both reports, I'm happy to say that we did not have any findings. You know, sometimes we do with our city and county clients, but for Loma Linda, we did not this year. And then the last report that we issue is what we call the GAN Limit Report. It's an agreed-upon procedures, and it deals with limits on spending. And so all of that went well this year. And at this point in time, I can take any questions that anybody might have for me.
Just want to point out that earlier this afternoon, we did have a meeting with the Audit Committee, which consists of the mayor, and Councilman Popevsky, myself, and Diana. So we went over this document earlier today.
And I'll just, you know, as a final point, just add that Diana and her team have worked very hard to help us to get everything done, and we appreciate their hard work. It's been a lot of work with the RDA dissolution and the successor agency and all of those demands that they've had to also take care of. So, thank you, Diana.
So your summary statement is that it was a clean report?
Yes.
I'm from an educational background. Give us a grade.
There's only, there's-
I don't know what clean means. It's a pass/fail system, or I see-
No, it's, I have to use auditor's feet, because that's how, that's the world I come from. So there's three types of basic opinions you can have. You can have unqualified, meaning we didn't find anything of a material significance that we have to report on. Let me give you an example. Let's say, for example, you have a city that, there could be some asset account or something like that, that we cannot get our arms around, we can't audit, maybe there's not sufficient data or detail behind that number. So what we would typically do in that circumstance is we would qualify. We'd say, we were able to test and review everything else, but this account balance, we basically are passing on it. So that would be a qualification. Then the next, I'm sorry. I'm not going to give grades. I'm just going to tell you how we look at the world, and how I'm required to per regulatory standards. The next step down would be what we call an adverse opinion. And that's bad. That's where we basically are kind of walking away and basically saying we can't really give an opinion on this entity.
So unqualified is the highest-
That's what you want.
-rating that you can get.
Yeah.
Okay. And I realize this certificate on page Roman numeral 15 didn't come from you, but do you know anything about-
Background, the GFOA certificate?
Yes.
Basically, what, not every city or county receives that certificate, so basically, that means you have outstanding finance and reporting. And so what they do is you have to file your report with the GFOA within a certain timeframe. They review the report each year, and they give you comments back. So say, for example, they review the report and they happen to have a lot of comments. They may not give somebody that certificate the next year. We've not had that experience, but again, that's a good thing to have. Not everybody goes for the GFOA award. It's something that you have to go after, and you have to basically have your financial statements reviewed. They have to kind of pass the test with them.
Have we applied for this year?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Last comment on page Roman numeral eight. I'm not sure if I'm, I guess I'm missing some pages here. Roman numeral eight. I don't have anything between eight and 16 in my copy, so I'll get that from somebody that has a complete copy.
Those pages are missing.
Are they in yours as well? So we have several pages missing. Wow.
I think it's a pagination error, and not missing pages. I think it's just, they're numbered wrong.
Although this one, this one does have them. Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Diana and your staff.
They're out of order, is what it is. There's a, it's a pagination error.
Okay. I found them then?
It's not, it's nothing for you.
Okay.
We'll get that cleaned up.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I found them.
Yes, Diana will give us the backup materials.
I have an annual presentation that I go through, basically. I'll just kind of quickly go through it. And basically, as Sheri referred to this, what we call the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Statement, it encompasses the whole city and any component units of the city. The redevelopment agency was a component unit of the city, but for this year, you'll see it reported only the seven-month activity of the redevelopment agency. And then you'll see also, the change will be that when the redevelopment went away, we had three funds for redevelopment, the debt service, the capital fund, and then the loan mod operations fund. When redevelopment went away, we then became a successor agency, which in this report does not get, it's in here as a trust fund. It's called a private purpose trust fund now in the report, so you'll see that separate. But the numbers in that are not reported as part of the city's financials as far as governmental activity or enterprise activity. So that will be a distinction that you'll see in the report. And then we now have a housing authority, which is considered still a component unit of the city and does get reported with the city financial statements. So those are some significant changes in this document as we go through it. The document contains this letter of transmittal. As you pointed out, we have the GFOA certificate, and that certificate is for last year's report, so it comes a year behind. So we did submit this report for a certificate. If we are awarded the certificate, we will put it in next year's report for the 2012 report. And then we have principal officers and org chart. And these, the requirements for these sections are part of, GFOA requires them to get a CAFR. You have to have all these sections and what goes in those sections. So they kind of give you the guidance and the outline for what you need to put in this document to make it, to qualify as a CAFR, basically. We have the financial section, which includes the independent audit reports. We do a management discussion and analysis where we highlight any significant changes for the year or issues for the year. The one major thing will be the dissolution of RDA, which gets pointed out. We give some kind of trends and stuff in the, we discuss in the management discussion and analysis as well. We have the basic financial statements, which are, we have two presentations of the financial statements. We have the government-wide financial statements, and we have what's called the fund financial statements. Then we have the notes to the basic financial statements, and we have some required supplementary information, and then we just have supplementary information. We also have a statistical section that's required, that gives some financial trends, some revenue capacity, debt capacity. And this covers a 10-year history. So when we started doing the CAFR per the requirements, we had to build up to the 10-year history, but now we have a 10-year history as we're moving forward. The financial statements include, as I said, the city as a whole, which are all the governmental funds and the enterprise funds. We have the redevelopment agency for the seven-month operating period. And then we have the successor agency as the new private purpose trust fund for a five-month period. And so this is our change in net assets, basically. This is the presentation of investment in capital assets, net of related debt, our restricted assets, and then our unrestricted assets. This is where we ended the year as a city overall. Compared to prior year, there are some changes in the presentation. Because the RDA went away, this investment in capital assets, net of related debt, because the RDA debt went away, this number changed significantly by $31 million, because all that debt came out of there at the end of the year. So that was a major change to this balance here. And then in unrestricted, we have for the city, it decreased 16 million for the governmental and 7.9 million for the business-type activity. And a lot of these big dollar changes all are related to the dissolution of RDA and the impact it has on the city as a whole. Here we go through, and it's a statement of activities, but it basically shows our change in net assets. It kind of shows our operations throughout the year, what the programs cost the city and throughout the year. You have a comparison to last year, but we also highlighted at the end of this year that the extraordinary items, which you'll see there, the 8.2 million extraordinary item in the change in net asset for the governmental, well, for the city as a whole, basically, as opposed to last year. Here is the change in fund balance. And this, last year, we implemented, there was a new fund balance guidance that came down, and we had to classify fund balance into these five categories up here. And we adopted a fund balance policy as far as the commit, well, all fund balances, but as far as committed, we designated that 3.5 million as an emergency rainy day fund. So that's committed. A council adopted a resolution for that. If we need to dip into that money, council has to adopt a resolution to dip into that money as well. So these are the changes. The major change was, you could see, is in unassigned, which is basically our unrestricted unassigned, and, you know, more of our operating float type. And basically, our, we did, over the year, this past year, as you can see, we did increase the general fund by $423,000 as far as operations. We look at our revenues as opposed to our expenditures and then our other financing sources, we added $423,000 to our fund balance. Keep in mind, this is June 2012. We are behind because of the dissolution of redevelopment, just all the compliances associated with that, and so that has taken us longer to put these numbers together. And just booking all the entries required to dissolve the redevelopment agency has been an exercise and education. And then here we have our business-type activities. You will see, again, the main one is this extraordinary item to the water acquisition. Water acquisitions was one of the funds that loaned to the RDA, and because the advances to the RDA were basically according to the state wiped out. So basically, these were the loan balances to this fund, and that's why you'll see this extraordinary loss there. And here's the big one for the RDA. You'll see that for the current year, it's a zero balance. There is no more RDA. Basically, as of January 31, 2012, RDA went away. That wiped out. And this will show the operations, basically, for the seven months of the RDA. We've kind of put, highlighted before extraordinary items and then after extraordinary items. Basically, as we closed out the fund, basically, everything went away, so it nets out to zero. But before extraordinary items, there was a 2.7 million fund balance, change in fund balance. Basically, I just want to thank my staff, Sonia, Bella, especially, for all her hard work in doing the financial statements. As I've been called away to do redevelopment stuff, she's kind of stepped in and taken a lot of the load for kind of operational and financial reporting, so I couldn't have done it without her and the rest of my staff, and the city manager, and everybody's help. If there's any questions?
I just want to commend you again for all the hard work that you do, and you're very on top of this. I also would like to say I appreciate having the PowerPoints now included with the agenda. It makes it easier to kind of follow along, and then we actually have the whole report here in our agenda too, so that's pretty nice. I understand there's other agencies looking at how we prepare our agendas to mimic them, and that's kind of neat, too.
We just need to get the mayor to learn how to use the iPad.
I just need the password.
I just want to add my congratulations as well. I know this has been a tough year with negotiating the myriad of regulations and dissolution of RDA. My hat's off to you and your staff, because I know, and you're also very effective at helping somebody that's not always up to speed on finances and financial policies and accounting tools and so forth. You're able to explain it in a uniquely way, because I, at least I have the, I feel like I'm keeping up with you at times, and that's a pretty remarkable thing for me. But well done. This has been an incredible amount of work. Appreciate it.
You're not leaving, but I guess we're praising you. Well, there's no doubt about it. I think Jarv and Conrad look good because of you. I mean, you really do all the heavy lifting.
I agree.
I've, as many of you can see by this presentation, public accounting is extremely complex, and that only really just summarizes it. If you look at our budget, it has multiple, multiple accounts that- If you look at our budget, it has multiple, multiple accounts that have to be kept track of and they got to do it right. And I spent many of, I'm saying, I won't say hours, but quite a bit of time with you in your office. And it always amazes me how you're able to recall figures and numbers from years back. I just, I'm dumbfounded. So we appreciate you and we hope you continue to work for us because you make us all look good. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. Both of you know how much we appreciate what you've done and everybody else that helps too. We understand we've short-staffed you a bit, but you've really accomplished an awful lot with what you have. So, thank you. Are there any other comments or I don't think there's a action we need to take?
No action.
Okay. Then our next item is a presentation by David Rutherford regarding status of the SBX bus
Mayor Riggs, honorable council staff, good evening. Dave Rutherford. I am the public relations specialist for the SBX project with Omni-Trans. And we are now in your city and we felt it appropriate to give you an update finally. It's been a couple of years since we've been here. By the way, I'm here with my program manager, Millen Joshi, who can answer any technical questions you have regarding the construction activities. But we just wanted to give you a brief update on what's going on, where we've been, and kind of give you a timeline on when you can expect things to start wrapping up. Fortunately for Loma Linda, there's not a lot of roadwork that needs to be done as with San Bernardino where there's street widening, a lot of utility relocation. But we do have some substantial construction activities going on in three areas of the city and there are a total of, okay, great, thanks. There are a total of five station platforms that we're, eventually we'll be doing work on, of which four we've already gotten started. So this is a general schedule of our construction activities. You can see Loma Linda's column is on the right. We've broken it down into four activities. Roadwork, the work on the stations, the systems, which are infrastructure on the platforms, as well as the signals, and then of course startup and commissioning. So there's an NA in that green spot essentially because there is really no wo, roadwork that we're doing in Loma Linda. It's all being done at the station locations. So much of the work that's being done right now is on the stations. We expect to be done with much of that work by fall of this year. And probably by around November, December, we will be starting doing some testing and training. And startup will happen closer to the beginning of next year. And we expect to have passenger service beginning sometime by the spring, end of the winter of this year, of 2014. So let's start with the southern terminus. This is the work we're doing in, at the VA Medical Center on Benton Road, just north of Barton. You can see that the structural framework is up, structural steelwork. There will be public art on, in form of glass panels and structural monument as a tribute to our veterans. The public art, by the way, is indicative of a lot of the historical perspective of Loma Linda that you'll see in common at all three locations. You can see on the glass panels, there are plans to have seals of each of the branches of the armed forces. And then there's a Stars and Stripes structural monument with dog tags streaming down the pole. The Stars and Stripes are made of dichor glass, so it's a tribute to the veterans and we think it will come out looking very nice once it's completed. So we have traffic controls in place. There was some concrete that was poured this morning, in fact, in that location for the curb and gutter work. And we're moving right along with that particular location. At the university, there are two station locations. One is in front of the Bank of America at Prospect and Anderson. We're doing pretty much the same type of thing, structural steelwork, curb and gutter. And we had the cranes out last month erecting the structural steel in front of the entrance to the university at Anderson, just south of Prospect. Again, public art there is reflective of the historical perspective of the university on the glass panels, but also looking forward into the future with the proton, uh, issues that Loma Linda is well-known for, the University Medical Center, in terms of the research that's being done there. The third location also has two station locations. The one on the west side of the street, just south of Redlands Boulevard, is a park and ride location. There will be a hundred and eighty spaces there. We have not yet begun setup of the platform on that side simply because we are working with Edison to relocate some of the, um, the utilities in that location where we want to have the station platform. But we have done much of the grading in the lot and we are working towards getting that up very soon. On the other side of the street, which is actually on the other side of the San Mateo Creek, there is a platform already up and structural steelwork. You've probably seen some of that. We are essentially online with all of the, the platforms and all of these are side-running stations. So it's traditional type of boarding and the buses will be running in mixed flow traffic. Tied into the construction work that we're doing in Loma Linda and San Bernardino with the stations is the modifications that we're doing at our facility in San Bernardino. And there are changes that are going to need to be made to the, the bus bays where we service our vehicles. We also are lengthening the bus wash and making modifications to our CNG fueling facility to accommodate a sixty-foot long bus. So that's happening at the East Valley Maintenance Yard. And then nine of the fourteen vehicles that have been purchased through the CMAC program have arrived and we've done some re-striping at the facility and we're reconfiguring it so that they are parked in a, in their own exclusive location, separate from the forty-foot vehicles. So you can see how they match up to a traditional forty-foot bus there in that photo. So we began work on that late last year and it's about a twelve-month project. So we anticipate being done with that before the start of passenger service. So just to wrap up, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we can be reached 24 hours a day if anyone has issues. We don't anticipate them, but you know, they happen every now and then on construction projects. The advantage of working in Loma Linda is that it's pretty simple. I think just keeping the public informed really helps. I've been attending chamber meetings regularly and keeping them informed with newsletters and just kind of updates during the introductions. But the toll-free number is at eight-five-five SBX news. And then we also have a website and we can be found on Facebook and Twitter. So that in a nutshell is what's going on in Loma Linda and I'm glad to answer any questions if you have any.
First question, it ends at the VA, correct?
Yes, that is the southern terminus.
And my understanding is that a lot of that has to do with the outpatient services that the VA offers over there?
There is already a very high demand among veterans for public transit at the VA. A lot of veterans live in the northern part of San Bernardino. It takes them typically thirty to forty-five minutes to get here. This will cut their commute time by at least a third.
So my question is, can this line be expanded? Because I'm not sure if you're aware of, but we're going to be building a whole new VA facility off of Redlands Boulevard. So a lot of that traffic may necessarily all end at the present VA location. Is there plans to extend this to go to a new facility?
You know, I, I know that during the planning process, we had looked at going into Redlands, the refined locally preferred alternative though had it ending at the, the southern terminus, but I, I don't know whether there is.
Let me add for you, right now this existing Omni-Trans bus is going east and west on, on Redlands Boulevard toward Redlands. So people that use this SBX can change, can, can, can change the bus at the Redlands and Anderson to go east on Redlands Boulevard.
Yeah, I believe Route Eight and Route Nine. And by the way, Route Two will remain on the corridor because it makes stops on average every third of a mile, where this one, this express service averages once a mile, but it runs more frequently.
And just a follow-up question. Excuse me. Do you anticipate or do you, do you have anticipated ridership numbers as compared to the present system that you have now?
Yes, the, um, the ridership projection for our line upon the start of passenger service is roughly fifty-seven hundred. That compares to roughly twenty-five hundred that we have on Route Two. We think that, that's a fairly conservative estimate considering the performance of BRT lines in other urban areas that, where they've been installed. We've seen quite a bit of success at the beginning of the completion of some of these projects in places like Las Vegas and Eugene, Oregon, and Cleveland, Ohio, where BRT is used. And we even have a, there's a, a BRT system in Los Angeles and San Fernando Valley with the orange line. That's probably the closest one that compares to this one, although that one's pretty much all dedicated lanes.
And the increase in ridership is related to the speed of the route? Or why would more people ride it?
In part, yes. The whole idea behind BRT is to create a system of dedicated lanes for long-distance commuters that allows them to get through congested arteries and ideally stop nowhere but at the station platform locations. But there are other factors that weigh into the, you know, the curiosity of new transit line and those types of things. So the numbers sometimes tail off, but we've yet to see what, what will happen, but we're very encouraged that ridership will be increased on this corridor because of this project.
Just for some clarification, so the line comes up South Bend on Anderson, goes down Prospect to Benton, which is the final stop? And then does it loop around on Barton Road and then go south on Anderson again?
No, no, it's south on Anderson to Barton Road and go east on Barton.
And then loops around that way.
And to Benton, Benton to Prospect and go north.
Exactly what Route Two does right now. So the loop is, it comes down Anderson to Barton, makes a left on Barton, makes a left on Benton, stops at the southern terminus, and then makes a left at Prospect and then a right on Anderson, goes north. Exactly what Route Two does right now.
There's no issues with those buses as long as they are making those turns, huh?
They're articulated.
Yeah, they actually can make those turns more conveniently than the forty-foot buses because of the articulation in the middle. So they're very flexible.
And we have Dr. Daley to thank for this because he sits on the omnibus.
It was pretty much all my idea.
Got to credit the man.
A couple of comments. One is I, I like the artwork. It's, I think this is going to be visually attractive to people that, I mean, it's not just a regular bus stop and I'm quite appreciative of that. And based on reports that I've heard in the Omni-Trans board meeting, this has got to be the easiest presentation you've done because it's pretty minimal impact on the city compared with a lot of the other things that you're into. My question though is, just went out of curiosity, maybe I should be asking the medical center this, but the, the SBX stop in front of the medical center is right in front of a major sign announcing that that's Loma Linda University Medical Center. Was that, I, I assume somebody had to approve and plan that. They're going to move that sign or did anybody talk with you about it?
Yeah, I, um, what the outcome was of that.
The location of that particular station was in consultation with the city officials and the.
Okay. I assume so, but it seems like an odd place to put it, right in front of one of the two major signs, I guess.
And I think that even the public art panel is transferred to.
Yeah, we also worked with the university to get a university logo on one of the panels as well at each of the location, each of the canopies. So people will know when they pull up to it that it is Loma Linda University Medical Center.
Well, it's not a city issue. I guess it's between you and the university. I just found it curious.
The university also, I think, donated the land for the, for the station.
Yes, and the park and ride as well.
Yeah, and the park and ride. And I also understand that the latest big plan for the university is to abandon that whole entrance as a, as a vehicular entrance.
Well, over the long haul, yeah.
In ten years or more.
Yeah, that's going to be a few years down the road.
Yeah, there are a lot of things going on in and around the area of the university and over near our other station location at Redlands. We're working with the stakeholders to make sure we don't step on each other's toes with the Stewart Street undercrossing and some of the other things going on with the I-10 widening project. Thank you, David.
How are you dealing with the issues of blocking some of the view of one of our business owners who's actually in the audience today? That's the station across the street from the park and ride.
Well, the park and ride, I mean, the, the station on the east side of Anderson and Redlands is actually on the other side of the San Mateo Creek Wash. So it's actually across the street from the academy. It's not going to be in front of.
So it's not in front of any businesses?
Right.
Is it in front of homes? What's that?
It's in front of the, the website, from the university website.
Oh, okay. Another question I, well, you wanted to make a comment about that?
The station that you're asking about is in front of Florist, almost Florist. My question is, where you put it presently, in all the documentation that I've seen, it's also being documented as temporary. Is that now going to become a station based platform?
You're referring to the current bus stop for Route Two?
Where you built existing of bus stop now, which is across the street from the academy and across the street from the park and ride. Originally you were going to have it put in front of my business, but it's on the other side of the water canal right now.
Right.
Is that going to be temporary or is it?
That's permanent, yeah. That had nothing to do with the location of it in front of the business though. Had more to do with the timing of the.
Okay, it's, it's going to be.
So the Route Two stops will stay where they are?
Yes.
Yeah. I have a question about the graffiti-proof nature of these public art things. What, what elements do they have that defeats graffiti artists?
Two things. First of all, the glass panels will be treated with a graffiti coating that will make it easy to remove tagging. We have a zero tolerance policy for graffiti already in place at Omni-Trans. That's probably why you never see any graffiti on our coaches. Whenever we spot graffiti on our coaches, they're immediately taken out of service and cleaned up. So that policy will continue with the stations as well. And the second element of our graffiti protection has to do with the artist teams. In a, in a sense where you have more intricate art such as structural monuments and others, they will be contracted to handle those since those involve a little bit more of an undertaking and cleaning up. But, you know, we don't anticipate too much of a problem, particularly in Loma Linda. It doesn't seem to be a problem right now and, you know, we want to keep it that way.
The perpetrators could get on the bus.
The perpetrators could get on the bus and come quickly into our town and escape quickly, according to your...
I can tell you that there will be surveillance cameras on the platforms. There will be surveillance cameras in the park-and-ride lots, and there will be surveillance cameras in the buses.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, then, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Do you want to make this a public question? If so, you can come to the podium. Or you can just ask him personally. Okay. Okay, then we'll proceed. We have the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull item nine.
Why don't we just discuss item nine then first? And we get a report from Public Works.
Yes, this is to install the glass panel around the, what do you call this, the fountain of 9/11 memorial. So that right now, it's kind of, you walk around, you just drop in. And so this is to prevent the kid from jumping in or somebody dropping to that rock.
And that makes sense. My question has to do with the glass. Is this going to be...
It's four feet.
Three feet? These are glass panels, then?
It's...
How high are they? And I guess my primary issue is, I've seen glass around fountains before, and it has water marks that are a task to track of.
Yes, and that, they're going to be responsible for cleaning it up.
The fire department.
Yes, yes. And as far as the height, I think it's four feet per state law requirement for railing requirement.
Part of the spec on that was a treatment on the glass to make it as maintenance-free. We, in talking to the vendors, we articulated the same point. We've seen these, they're, the glass is done very, that accentuates it. And then there's other glass that's done that really takes away. So in terms of what was spec, the designer has told us that the treatment, it's a higher-end glass, and the treatment on that is meant to keep that high, you know, that sharp look on the glass with minimal maintenance.
Okay, my question is, because we have notoriously hard water with a lot of deposits, and, but, and then my other question was, who's going to maintain it? But it sounds like you guys volunteer, which is appropriate. I feel much better knowing that.
Right now, Public Works guy.
It'll shine, just like the, just like the engines in trucks.
Follow-up question on the same item. Where are the funds coming from again? Which account?
It's Art and Public Place.
Okay.
There are funds that had already been approved for the project that we did not end up using due to the fundraising, and so they were still attached to the project. And some of the early concern articulated back to us from council members was the risk management element. So that's, that was the drive.
Yeah. Item number 8A, we're appropriating $32,000 from the general fund to buy an animal control truck. Can you update us a little bit on animal control? I know we were doing contract, now we're doing it in-house.
Yes, for next fiscal year, I'm proposing that we do the in-house. What happened is, right now, we contract the animal control services with the city of San Bernardino to both housing the animals and pick it up, and, but we receive a lot complaint regarding that. In addition, we also contract out the court enforcement, where this gentleman only come in eight hours a week. And it turned out that I do majority of the court enforcement myself, and it turned out when people come out, during the complaint or citation...
Wait till you see jarred in the animal control truck.
I just don't have enough time to go out and help the person with the complaint. So what we tried to do is create this new position that one person will handle both the court enforcement and animal control. And it'll be a cost-saving right now, but we're still going to have a, use the animal shelter with the city of San Bernardino. And in addition, we plan to have a contract with City of Riverside, County of Riverside for backup animal control services, just in case our guys on vacation or weekend, we can have the County of Riverside animal control staff to come out and help us with that.
Do we have the manpower for that? I mean, I assume there's some training that goes into this.
We got to hide that new person.
So it'll be someone new that has the experience?
Yes, and that's something that I was going to mention at the next session. Yes, as a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, we did the research, and it turned out there's a lot of them that are doing this.
Do you paint the truck, code enforcement, on one side and animal control on the other side?
No, it's the same truck with the animal, truck in it. I mean, they can install animals and so forth.
If you pay us a fee, we could put your picture on it.
There's a, I think, a little more vision to that even in, I think, in contracting that service, we've found over the last couple of years, really all we have is a response in terms of an animal program in our city that has just kind of melted away. So we're finding fees, licenses, all those things that an animal program would maintain have kind of vanished. So I think some of that vision is someone that is dedicated and to our community is rebuilding that animal program. It's actually pretty vibrant in our community. It can actually help bring some ideas and solutions to some problems we have rather than simply having...
Do we know offhand what San Bernardino takes in in licensing fees from us?
Is, is, we lose that revenue and not much at all, they don't follow up. And so what we would like to do is have this person actually follow up with the homeowners that house, I mean, have animals that, hey, you need to come to the city hall and pay for your dog license. If not, we'll cite you.
That might, in part, fund the position.
Yeah, he worked on the most recent calculations, but as the years went on in the contract, we, services began to wither away, and that was one of them. So I think that was, Conrad, in your model, you've considered that there will be some revenue for licenses.
We're looking at about $30,000 a year in licenses that we're not getting right now. And then the other one is the compliance factor, like the fire chief said, that there's unlike, there's no real sweep. Anybody never goes out to see if there's any animals licensed. And between our officer and the availability of Riverside County, teams that do this under contract, we could do that and get enforcement on it as well.
Where are we going to house the animals and get picked up?
And then, and then the cost of that will be the responsibility of the animal owner, I assume.
That's, it's factored into the operating cost of the program. We have an estimate from San Bernardino of what they currently house and how many animals that they've had on an annual basis.
Is it in my closed session?
Oh, okay. But, and I don't know if we can discuss this later or not, but have we talked with maybe the city of Redlands for housing? Is it just a huge difference?
They asked it to build a whole new shelter for them, kennel for them.
They, they have an ordinance there, the only single dog residences, so 7,200 square feet minimum. Yeah, we can't afford theirs. So is the consent calendar now suitable for a preliminary motion?
I will move it.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Old business is nothing, new business. Number 11, proposed amendments to the League of California City's bylaws. Who's the discussant on this one?
The League of California City would like to revise their resolution related to legal bylaw amendments. So is...
I move the item.
I will second it. Although I sit on the league board, I don't recall this coming up at our board meeting, so this must have come from, straight from Sacramento. But I will second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Item 12, County San Bernardino Resolution Calling for Equitable Funding to Run the Court System and Request That the City Sign On to the Resolution.
I'll move the item.
I'll, I'll second it with some comments. I was at the city-county conference about two weeks ago, and this was a discussion item brought up quite frequently about the court closures and how our county is actually very behind the rest of the state and all the other counties, and how much the state pays on our court system. And if you don't know, all the courts now are all owned by the state, and they had decided to eliminate Barstow and Morongo, which is Joshua Tree, 29 Palms, that court, and out at Needles also, which puts a huge burden on the two remaining courts, which would be in Victorville and San Bernardino. Chino's already been closed. So it was, it was pretty drastic, and county leadership got together and decided to petition the state and have them relook at it. In comparison to other counties, again, we were far, far below what other counties were getting. So I think that's kind of in the works, and it sounds like there's been some relief on that, so, but this is a good program.
Yeah, and to all of the small government advocates, this is an equity, an equitability issue. The state did not expand our court systems to match our population growth, and now they're subjecting us, unexpanded, to the same retractions that they're imposing statewide. So they want to save money statewide, but what they should do is get us up to where we should have been and then give us the cut, which would be more than we currently have. So we're getting a double whammy. No growth, and we get the cuts.
I had just a follow-up question, if you know, Phil. In the letter that I noticed from our supervisor, they mentioned local municipalities as part of the funding. Do they anticipate that this plan includes raising some of the fees that people get charged, or we get charged? Do you know?
I don't, I think their initial plan was, there was, should have been no additional funding, I'm sorry, no additional cost to any of the local municipalities. So I'm not exactly certain, I haven't had a chance to review this letter, but that's not what they're asking for. They're asking for the state to basically pony up what they should have done for us years ago. We're not offering to, to put anything more into the pot.
Thank you. I think I moved it, and he's...
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Number 13, designation of...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to table this item into, for a future meeting, please.
Okay. We can do that.
I guess we, any one of us can table, so we'll just table it.
Yeah. Okay, do we need to vote on a table?
Well...
We don't follow...
Yeah, the item is, staff's recommending that it be taken off the agenda for tonight and re-agendized in the future, basically. Doesn't take any action.
So my question earlier, are there any additions or deletions was incorrect?
Well, I want to, I want to leave, I was moving.
It's not a notice, public hearing, or anything that would require a formal action.
Okay, good.
Just be re-agendized.
Are there any reports of councilmen? Are there any reports of officers? Then we adjourn to, well, we will adjourn after the closure of our closed session to the 6:00 PM meeting in May for conducting a workshop. Now we'll go to our successor agency agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
We have the joint meeting. The consent calendar is available for your motion.
I'll move.
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We're adjourned on that meeting. Now we'll go to housing. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Oh, I'll give the public a double chance to participate. You can talk about redevelopment agency or housing. Here's your chance. Any item not on the agenda? Okay, there's, nobody wants to talk, so I offered it for nothing. Okay. Closed session, we already reported that out. We did the joint session, the consent calendar.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Any chair or board member reports? Any reports of officers? Okay, we're adjourned on that one. We will go into closed session, and if you're a real government wonk, you can stick around and wait for the report. Otherwise, good evening.